They got their approvals in nineteen eighty-nine, they started to go into progressing the application. And it based the environmental cleanup is what derailed the project. They they didn't have enough funding, I think they tried to work with the borough, the borough didn't want anything to do with it. Essentially, that's that was the end of that project. So. Again, like I said, the, you know, the properties up here. This was vacant for a long time before the ice cream store, uh, the ice cream store came in probably five, six years ago, I believe.
At least.
Yeah. Pop's Place was formerly a gas station, um, then became the, um, Enterprise Car Rental. And then we did the application, actually when Dominic came to us, so what happened was Dominic and his partners. Purchased the old Pizza Hut and the the part the where the dump is. And while at the same time, we were finishing up Pop's Place as well as the Sappio's applications. And I think we kind of put them together and helped assemble the remaining parcels to to get this overall tracked. And then again, the last one is the, uh, the landscape place here in the middle. Like I said, the, uh, and Mike said, uh, the applicant probably started in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty to start assembling these properties. Finally got everything together under under contract. Subsequent to that, uh, we started wo- working with the Minno and Wasco to start developing. You know, basically the site plan, the the building development. And again, subsequent to that, starting to have a meeting and, uh, early discussions with the redevelopment committee. At the same time, once we got somewhat of a, uh, conceptual plan of the building and and the project. We then submitted to the, uh, DEP for a flood hazard permit. And typically those take three to four months, start to finish. This one took six to seven months, uh, we had numerous iterations. Not good enough, change this, change that. And ultimately, in the end, what happened was that, um, obviously, we were ending, gonna end up removing all six buildings that are on. In the development area, which is all of those, as you know, uh, as recently as Ida, all have gone underwater during flooding. With with the new project, everything will be above the flood hazard area or elevation of forty-nine. So as I get into the, what the project consists, uh, I'll kind of run through each of those elements as we go through. But, um, at on May first, twenty twenty-three, the borough named, um, the applicant as the redeveloper of the properties. Um, like I said, at the same time, we were working with the DEP and ultimately got our approval on November ninth, twenty twenty-three. We continued to meet with the redevelopment committee to refine things. And got it to this point where we are here tonight for the input. And whatever additional information, questions that the planning board would have of the application. So that ultimately, we come in with a, an, uh, formal, formal application to the planning board. So what what the applicant intends to do, and I can, uh, switch to some of the architecturals. I think this one has, uh, probably the biggest impact. One of the things of the of the redevelopment plan is that if anything were developed in this area. It is to be the gateway to to Main Street. We were, it is to be essentially one on either end, ones to be on the west end, which is, um, you know, what is going up now. Uh, by Davenport Street and, you know, those areas. And this this site would be on the east end of what coming into, um, Main Street. And what we're, what the applicant is looking to do, if I switch back to the aerial, again, looking to remove all of the buildings on the property. They're going to work with the borough to vacate Meadow Street. And ultimately consolidate all of the properties so that this red line would be a single, single parcel. The next step would be if the application, application's approved is to work with the DEP. To get an RAO for the cleanup or the the capping of the. Um, the landfill and the the three parcels that currently have cases at the DEP. The intent is the capping would be most likely get a twelve inch cap, a twelve inch clay layer. And, you know, just talking to the LS RP, uh, comparing to what is out there now and the degradation of the pavement. Putting in that twelve inch layer of of clay would be a substantial, uh, improvement of what it, what is out there now. Um, again, going back to the the rendering. We would be creating the, a gateway as as the, um, redevelopment plan, uh, looks to do. On this intersection, I mean, we do have a, what is a a small sign at this point, but we have, um. I guess in our discussions with the redevelopment committee. Will continue to work with the committee, committee in the borough or whoever it may be. To come up with a, some corner, some kind of a acceptable gateway. Uh, whether it's some kind of additional signage or what have you, but that would be part of the the application. Uh, of the, and the approval.
That view is from in front of the firehouse looking west.
Correct, so the firehouse is right here on on the left. And then, uh, this is the, uh, uh, convenience, uh, store. And then over to the right off the screen would be, uh, Park Avenue. And then we have another one that would be, so this would be traveling east on Veterans Memorial. And we're standing at the intersection at Hamilton. And then you can see the project on the left-hand side. This is driving east on Main Street, heading down the hill. The used car, um, dealership on the left, and you can see the top of the project in the distance. We also have, uh, this is a view, I guess you would say from Vander Veer Park, the Memorial Park. And you have Veterans Memorial on the, on the bottom here. And this would be looking from Park Avenue, the, say, even like the basketball courts. You can see the different versions of it. And then what I've shown here is essentially the final product with an aerial view behind it. So you have Hamilton Street on the left, Veterans Memorial, and then East Main Street along the top. The, this is the upper part where the apartments would be, uh, you can see there would be an open area in between. On the second floor of the of the deck, uh, of the building, there would be retail. So if I were to switch back. So that, this area right here would be retail. And then you would have four floors of residential above that. And the parking deck, you can see behind it, this would be the first level at the deck, this would be the second level of the deck. Beneath the first level, the deck would be open, that was part of the approval of the DEP. And we actually ended up creating more flood storage on the property than what is currently there through the removal of the the existing buildings. Um, as Mike said, we have two, oh, with the parking, two levels of of parking. Uh, the first level on the front half, which would be behind the retail. Would be, um, essentially for the retail parking and approximately a hundred and thirty-one parking spaces. Behind that would be gated, and that would begin the, uh, residential parking. And then the whole second level would be for the residential parking as well. It would include, obviously, ADA's parking as well as EV parking spaces. The lower level of the parking, the lowest level parking deck would be at elevation fifty-two. And as I said, the the flood hazard elevation is forty-nine, so even. The structural, structural supports of the deck would be above the flood hazard elevation. The second level of the deck would be sixty-two. And then the amenities portion. Sorry about that. These areas, yeah, gray areas, they would be up at at elevation seventy-three, so above that upper level decking. Um, as Mike said, they would construct two hundred and eighty-four residential units, all of which are above the flood hazard area. That'd be a mix of studio, one-bedroom apartments, approximately a hundred and four, two-bedroom apartments. Hundred and sixty-eight, three-bedroom apartments, uh, totaling twelve. The app, in our discussions with the redevelopment committee, we've also agreed to, uh, provide some sort of workforce housing. And our our planner will get into that discussion, uh, and go through that. And. As I said, you know, with the history of this, it's, this is really the culmination of. More than five years of the developer pull it, pulling this together, pr- but probably more so forty years of the of the borough. And, you know, that, like I said, it started out with, uh, David Stooks, and that was in the late eighties. Uh, the the redevelopment plan in nineteen ninety talked about redeveloping this area and these specific properties. And it's continued on ever since then. I know, um, Mike Kerwin's in 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 the audience, I know he was part of this as mayor back in the day. And so it has been a progression, and I think it's a rare opportunity. Uh, kind of like Mike said, that we can assemble the number of properties that, uh, the applicant has done. Be able to get the flood hazard permit. And to get a, uh, the ability and the opportunity to redevelop this property like this. Uh, again, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions. What about access to the parking? Will it be out of the water?
So the.
Is it, is the access above the flood hazard area?
The parking access, there's two, two access points, there's one right here, which would come on the Veterans Memorial. And then there's a second one going on to East Main Street. This driveway is completely clear of the flood hazard area, uh, I believe this elevation is approximately fifty-two. So, and the elevation of forty-nine is approximately in this location.
Uh, can I interject one second, Mr. Chairman, I don't think we're streaming.
So there will be emergency service access during a a flood?
Yes. Yeah, the the second one, the the, that elevation forty-nine is approximately right at the driveway. So if you came out of the driveway, immediately made the left, you'd be out of it right away. But this driveway in the back here is com- but clear by three feet vertically.
Okay, and of course, in in the the course of doing this, you're gonna put in. Generators and, uh, sprinkler systems, and so, so what we're doing is creating. A safe. Place for people to live.
Right, I mean, if if there was a flood, they they would be able to either get out. Uh, via, uh, the driveways, or they could shelter in place. And that there are, would be generators, yes. So that they could shelter in place.
Thanks, I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of things to touch upon, and I think, I honestly, the development of the project itself is, is. The number one element, but I think also the kind of the history of things. And like I said, just the the opportunity of, you know, to redevelop this area is, I think it's.
Yeah, the the, the other thing I wanted to ask is you. By removing the buildings, you're increasing the flood storage area.
Yes.
Okay. It's all, just wanna make sure we got it all in.
Yeah.
We'll have time for more questions later, right, after he's done?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm pretty much at that point, yeah.
All right, well, um, the question I have is. I'm surprised that the DEP approved this. What did we tell them, we, everybody in this room, about where the flooding actually was and was not? The reason why I ask is, I've heard from different people over the last couple of years, that there was water. On Hamilton Street in people's basements, which is. A little further up the hill, so if there's water in the basement of somebody on Hamilton. The flood is not stopping, did it go into Agapi House? I'm not sure, I don't know where all the water damage was, but if people on Hamilton are saying, I got water in my basement. That's not fifty-two feet, that's, it's gotta be more than that, so if we told them forty-nine, but really it was sixty-five. Was there something about some technicality, or was this grandfathered in? Because this seems like. You can't even move the driveways to be out of the flood, you got one driveway at forty-nine.
Well, again.
On your calculation.
With with the permitting, it's really, you need to follow the regulations. And the regulations are, what is the flood hazard area in that area? And it's the map, their mapping. So it's not only their mapping, so it's their mapping as well as FEMA mapping, and they, you know, in this case, they pretty much coincided. So. And that, that's really what we have to work off of, I mean, we can't theoretically make stuff up, it's.
Well, no, but also, but, uh, uh, you can make a sin of omission. Not a sin of commit, you can just say, well, it really was forty-nine, no, it was really sixty-five, but we didn't really talk about that. I, people on Hamilton are screaming about.
Right.
This, and saying they got water in their basement, so if they're getting water in their basement and they're uphill. Wh- what was the actual flood range on the, on the bad days, what was it? It wasn't forty-nine feet.
What was, was the water from groundwater, or was it from floodwater?
Floodwater, this is what I was told by a couple of people on Hamilton a couple of years ago, that the water went beyond the Agapi House. It was on Hamilton, so residents of Hamilton, this is what they. Told to me, so maybe I'm misunderstanding, but that's why I'm asking the question, did it go into a Agapi House or not? Cause that would be, that's the property line, if a Agapi House got water. And they're at forty-nine feet, where else did the water go?
Yeah, yeah, I can tell you, I, during Ida, it it went up to the, uh, convenience store.
Okay.
Right next door to Agapi House.
Yeah, yes.
That's, I was there the next morning and that, that's.
So it never went into Agapi House, they never had.
I would imagine if they have a basement and went in, it, you know, was groundwater, absolutely, everybody had groundwater during Ida, everybody.
Well, there's my point then.
Well, the groundwater comes up, whether the floodwater hits it or not.
But this ain't helping out.
Groundwater comes up.
Yeah, no, I get that. So what about the Hamilton Street questions, should we? Get more.
I don't have an answer for you, Larry, but I don't think that's gonna change. I think this project, the only thing this project is gonna do is improve the situation.
Because of the lower level, the lowest level's gonna be built up.
Well, because we're removing buildings.
That's moving the impervious coverage, but the water.
No, it's, it's also physically removing, I mean, those built, say if we don't do this project, and those buildings are occupied, they're flooded.
Yes.
Th- this would not be.
Right, because you're raising the building up, that area that's underneath the first level.
Correct.
Should that be raised higher to allow more water retention?
Well, it's not gonna retain, retain it, it's gonna flow in and flow out, that was the big thing with the DEP, to allow the water to flow.
But if you're saying that cars pulling out of the, one of the driveways pulls out at forty, you know, there's a forty-nine foot driveway. A front foot, the height is at forty-nine feet, and they're, they're gonna, they're gonna run into water already, before they even get out of the driveway. What can we do about that? I mean, at least, cause I understand you can't build things to make it for the hundred-year storm, but we have a hundred-year storm every three or four years around here. So it's, it, it, there's gotta be something more to protect. Otherwise, it just sounds like we're building a really big building in the middle of a flood plain, that's gonna be the headline, that's what people are gonna see, that, so. These are questions that I think we need to get better answers for, I think the building is beautiful, I think it's a good idea. Not there and not that big, unless they're gonna boost it up even more, but then that makes a visual impact that may not be preferred.
I I guess, and I'm gonna paraphrase Larry, I I guess at that forty-nine-foot flood stage. How much higher can the water go, cause I I, I'm assuming it reaches a capacity at some point where it then just spreads out, floodwater.
Yeah, essentially, I I would say that the bridge downstream is kind of what backs things up, yeah. You know, between, actually, the bridge on Main Street and then the railroad bridge.
Yeah, but but, you know, when we have a, like a, an Ida, at some point, there, it reaches a. I guess it doesn't reach a maximum capacity ever, really, depending on, you know, if you get twelve inches of rain in four hours, you're, you're, everybody's inundated. But at that forty-nine-foot flood stage level. What's the, what's the, what's the capacity in terms of how much more rain can be handled? It'll spread out, how much more before it starts going up again, and I think that's maybe what.
That's part of it, yeah.
Yeah.
It's hard to say because it's such a big area, I mean, really, you know, we're, again, we're talking about, you know, a few acres of our project, whereas this is. You know, more of a, not even just borough thing, it's more of a regional thing.
Yeah.
And it, you know, the, the other thing that has an impact on it is high tide, low tide, so.
So, no pun intended, but the perfect storm of events could blow this out of the water. The plan of fifty-two could be sixty, if it's high tide and we get twelve inches, you know, all these things.
Well, I mean.
Factoring in, you can't plan for everything, but it just seems like if we one time got forty-nine or fifty feet.
But that, that was basically what they said, that was es- essentially a hundred-year storm, so.
And and the storm before that, was that a fifty or, well, you know, I'm saying that we get a lot of these a lot now, it just gets worse. Because we're downstream from everybody else paving their parking lots.
Right. Um. The apartments, the apartments are at seventy-three.
So you're about ten feet above the flood elevation on finish floor of the apartments?
Twenty-four feet.
Twenty-four feet, so.
Yeah, I mean, you have, you have two parking decks before you even get to the, the residential.
Right, but the businesses that are on the ground floor are. Second floor, cause the first level's gonna be nothing. But if they're gonna get hit, that could be problematic also. What's, what's the, what's, when you show that long wall that goes around the front. With the patios up top for people having coffee and.
Yeah, this, this area right here is.
Yeah, that whole, that whole area.
That's fifty-five.
That's fifty-five, to the.
That's six feet above what would be the hundred-year storm.
The, the, the last, okay? And the DEP said this was okay, and it's not grandfathered, like, we're using current regulations? Or we're using old regulations from before they came out with these new regulations last year?
We got a permit before the changes of last year, yes.
And so they're grandfathered?
Yes.
Even though there's no plan approved yet?
Two feet above that.
So they gotta, they gave you approval before you got an approval for the project? That makes it grandfathered, the DEP approval was on a vague idea, not even a concept plan. Cause we haven't seen a concept plan until just now, so the DEP approved something a couple of years ago.
What they approved is very close to what, I mean, we've, we've continued to design above.
Yes.
You know, the, the base and the two parking decks were really the critical parts. The, you know, in and out of the parking deck and getting the parking deck out of the, the flood hazard area. The rest of that above, you know, once you're out with the the lower level, everything else can be designed accordingly.
Well, how can you take out, you know, on the, um, original, just the current overlay? That whole property that's the green, that's all there behind Hamilton, too, Meadow, that's a lot of pervious coverage. Water can go there, things can happen, you're removing that, and we're putting a building in almost ninety percent of the property? Is that what it is, like ninety percent?
Probably, yeah.
Ninety percent coverage into and I, into a place that we kind of know will flood, sometimes, on bad days. So we're gonna take out all that grass, put in concrete, I mean, there's gonna be foliage, and I saw the other pictures. I'm not questioning the beauty of the building, I'm just saying that that is. It just seems like it's making a mistake to put such a large building, a whole lot of concrete into a flood zone. Unless you can kind of redemonstrate. How taking out that much, that much pervious coverage is gonna make it better.
There's really not that much pervious coverage out there now.
Except for that big green.
This green area?
Yeah, that's like about an acre, acre and a half.
This is an old parking lot.
But it's got.
I mean, I I understand there's trees there, but, you know, trees can grow through a lot of things.
True, that's what I'm asking, what is it?
Yeah, like I said, this is the remnants of a parking lot, and this is probably, it's way overgrown. But also the remnants of a parking lot, so you're.
And the landfill below that.
Yeah. I mean, it's, we did, cause there is, we are doing a small detention basin in this corner and all along the north or west property line. So we did some testing to see if there was any recharge, and, yeah, I mean, it's, when we went down, it's, it's still garbage.
Al.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Talking to your microphone.
Yeah, my, my, uh, plans here, shut off the mic, I apologize. Uh, you said there's been a two-foot change, uh, in the, uh, level of the flood standards. And I remember when this originally came before the board and, uh, you applied for the, go ahead and got that approval. Would this meet the current standards, this building project? Or does that two-foot change? What, what you have currently on paper here?
This driveway would still be clear, cause I said, at the bottom of the driveway is, I believe, fifty-two. So the new elevation would be fifty-one, we're, so we'd still be a foot above it. Uh, obviously, the, the one on Main Street would be further up the hill, but. I would estimate, uh, not too far above it, but it would be, uh. Pro- the drop, bottom of the driveway would be underwater.
Okay, so some pieces of this.
Yeah.
Wouldn't meet the current standards.
I mean, the regulations require that there be an access point to a non-flood hazard area. So we are complying with the, with the regulations themselves.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So I have a number of questions, um, so, but let, let me start by saying, I agree with you, it's a rare opportunity. This is, this, uh, gateway hasn't been much of a gateway to downtown Somerville for a long, long, long time. Um, and and I love the fact that we have people who want to invest in Somerville. Um, it's phenomenal, uh, I just, I think the world of that. You know, it's, so, so when we looked at this property a while back, and we've gone through iterations of, um, redevelopment plans. And 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 trying to figure out, you know, I think Mike started it, Mike Kerwin started it, and then successive mayors over time have all taken a crack at. How do we fix this end of Main Street? And, um, um, and it's a challenge, I mean, you've got, you know, old gas stations, you've got landfills, you've got, uh. Uh, a multitude of property owners, and and I agree, I think, you know, it's. Having the fortitude to assemble, uh, all of those parcels is, uh, is, is. having the fortitude to assemble, uh, all of those parcels is, uh, is, is, it's not an easy task. I think the concern of the board is, uh, twofold. It's, one, it's a big building. It's, it, it is a big, big building. It's a beautiful building. Um, I, I think it's a beautiful building. Is it big? Yeah. Um, and I think a big part of the concern is that we all know it floods. Um, Ida, there was probably at, at, at that corner of Vets and Main was probably about six feet of water. Five, five to six feet of water. It was probably five feet, cause you had cars, their, their roofs were covered. So, so it's, it's a good five feet of water.
Yeah, cause that elevation's roughly forty-four, so.
Okay, yeah, cause I was out there that night and I could see, you know, the max height for, for, uh, for, for the flood stage. A couple of concerns, you know, one, I, I would love for you to maybe sit with our emergency services folks and, and, and have a conversation with them because that is a big concern. You know, you look at it and you, we're looking at it dry. What happens, the what if? Larry's what if? Um, Larry and I don't always agree, but, but.
We never agree.
But we do it with.
Can't stand being wrong most of the time.
Um, but, but, you know, so, so what happens if, and, and it, you know, I'm just, it's, you're not gonna be able to answer this now. What happens if it does go higher than that forty-nine foot? And we hit that fifty-one or fifty-two foot and you can't get people out that driveway? Um, because I can tell you during Ida, it was darn close to that driveway. It was really, really close. Um, I was over on that side as well. So now we have an island. How do, how do we, we, emergency services, deal with that? Um, you know, the TDR, the transfer of development rights was intended to bring residential and commercial out of the floodplain along the brook. And, and I see what you're doing here. You, you're not bringing them out. You are bringing them out, but you're bringing them out a different way. You're bringing them up. And, and I understand that. But from an emergency services perspective, how do we, how do we get people out should we need to? And I don't know, I don't know that you can answer that right now, but I think that's a big concern that I know a, a number of folks on the board do have. Um, the what if? So, you know, how, how do we deal with that? And I, you, you don't have to answer that now. It's just, it's part of that.
Yeah.
Stream of consciousness. Um, so.
Can I tell another what if they're on that topic?
The EV charging stations, how many of them are there gonna be inside the parking deck?
If it's more than one, it's too many.
It's kinda where my point's going, is that we all know what, uh, those fires look like. And Roger could probably comment better than I can on, um, getting any kind of apparatus or anything in there to deal with it.
Doesn't the state have regulations about EV chargers?
They have to have a certain number and that's why I was asking, fifty-seven of them. So I, you know, from, from the emergency services to the mayor's point. That concerns me putting that many, hey, pull in here and charge. And that's typically where the fires begin with the EVs, so.
Yeah, and to that effect, we, we had an application over on Fairview Avenue, uh, very recently at this board. And I think the applicant had wanted the, the charging stations, I think it was right up against the building. And the board pushed back and said, it's, it's such a fire hazard. It's gotta be pulled away from the building. Am I right? Yes, yeah. Um, so I, I'm gonna go in a number of different areas and, and it, there's no logical sense to it. It was just notes as I, as I was kinda going through.
Never is. I'll stop, I'll stop.
I'll deal with you after the meeting.
I'll stop, I'll stop. Come on, open the door.
Um, so obviously, uh, we, we all know that affordable housing is becoming a, uh, a, 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 an issue that, uh, all communities have to deal with. Are, are you prepared, should this get approved at some point, to, uh, to work with the borough on the affordable housing component?
Uh, yes, and I'll let, uh, Jim Kyle kinda delve into that a little bit more.
Okay. What, what, what kind of variances are you looking at? Do you know?
Um, hopefully none. So.
Yeah, your top sheet has several. On the, on the, the main project, right at the top. There's five stories, that's one that's different than the normal three stories that's existing.
See, that's the thing with.
Some of the coverage, I mean, there's some little things is here and there.
With this particular portion of the redevelopment plan, it, with all due respect, it's kinda all over the place. Cause it, you know, it's split zoned, north and south.
It's the overlay.
Yeah, and then a lot of it kicks back and forth from the redevelopment zone to the original zone. So I think that, you know, ultimately, I think even before we come before the board, maybe we have the opportunity to clean that up and work with the, the redevelopment committee to, you know, possibly address some of that stuff. Just to, again, kinda clean up some things.
So, you know, obviously, the, the building faces two parks. Um, and, and, you know, the, the gateway on Main Street is, is visually appealing, but when you go around Vets, um, you know, I, I look at it and, and it's parking garage, you know, and, and I think there needs to be some treatments. I know you've done some treatments to it, but, you know, I look at it and I say, I think it can be handled better. Uh, accessibility from that side of the street to the other side of the street. Um, accessibility across Main Street, yeah, it's, uh, you know, I, I, I understand the treatments that were done. But, you know, it's, it doesn't have the same aesthetic as Main Street. And, you know, you can say, well, it's Vets, but what we're trying to do is to, um, you know, increase the desirability on Veterans Memorial Drive as well. Uh, the visual niceties. And, and I think there needs to be, uh, that treatment brought to the, to the other side of the building as well. It should be three sixty, not one eighty. Yep, go ahead.
All right, um, the, the homeowners properties on Hamilton, what's the distance between the building and their property? And then what's going in that space? Is that, cause none of the renderings show that actual space. Is that gonna be green spaces? Are they gonna be? It looked like there was a, uh, a fence in there, one of the drawings, but.
Uh, so you have Hamilton Street right here?
Yep.
And then this is their back property line.
So what's that, yeah, what's that distance and what is that?
Is that green space?
Yeah, there's, that, this is where a small detention basin would be. So it, it's actually a bio-retention basin, so there's, it's not just grass, it's gonna be a combination of, uh, shrubbery and trees as well. And then you have, you know, go right along, along the buffer here, and I think this is probably, I think, ten feet or so.
That's the existing driveway, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Easement. And is there a fence that's gonna go up to separate the properties from the backyards of the neighbors there?
I would think so, yeah. I mean, there is, there is a drop off, pretty good drop off right here. I mean, currently, there is a pile of concrete, for lack of a better term.
It's rubble?
That's a good term.
And so, and sorry, one, uh, and the distance from the building to the property line?
I believe this is fifty feet. If I remember this leg of the property line, it's that much. So you do have a little bit of a buffer and then, uh, this does drop off from the houses going back to the back, yeah.
So, so in terms of cleaning up historic landfill, are you looking at hogging out everything that's in there? Are you looking at hogging out partial and then capping?
Um, I think the, the lower end and where the parking lot is now, it would probably, by the time you take out the pavement and then allow for the twelve inch of clay, you probably will be taking out some. Um, you're also gonna probably be putting columns in there, so there may or may not. And then as you get further west, I think that you're gonna have to take out more and more of the material because it's only a one percent going to the west. So you're gonna drop, you know, probably two or three feet or more by the time you get to the Westerly side. So it's a, it's a combination, I think, probably the best answer.
Yeah.
I think we kinda have to go through the, you know, as well the, you know, I think it, dealing with the DEP and, you know, kinda going through the costs, uh, cost benefits of doing both. I think that's all part of getting the approval from the DEP.
Okay. Um, I think that's about what I have. I, again, I just go back to what happens if it's an island? Is there an ability to bring it up, as Larry said, another two or three feet? That, and, and ensure that there is egress during a, a potential storm? That's all I have.
Anybody else? And perhaps maybe, um, just looking at the generator location, that's probably the first spot of the property that would flood if we were getting water, so.
Well, I think they may be up on top.
Oh, that's on the rooftop?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought I saw it on the rendering on the.
I don't think we've gotten to that point of the, of the rendering.
Okay, anybody else? Mike, do you have more testimony?
Uh, we just have some, uh, brief comments from Mr. Kyle, our planner.
Good evening, everyone. Jim Kyle. Just a couple of brief comments. I mean, Mike and Craig really covered a lot of it. I just wanna kinda reiterate some of the benefits. Um, you know, from a planning perspective, Mayor, as you referenced, this is something that's been talked about. It's been talked about in master plan documents. There's been, you know, discussion, redevelopment plans, amendment of redevelopment plans. So it's been a longstanding policy of the borough as expressed in the master plan documents, uh, to really address this area. The, the, you know, the eastern gateway to Main Street, uh, the master plan even in nineteen ninety talks about encouraging mixed use development here. Uh, it talks about multifamily residential buildings. And then kind of in some generalized statements, it talks about the addition of additional residential, to continue to support downtown businesses. Um, it talks about the addition of commercial uses to activate the street in this area. So as we look, you know, so as we look at this, this would be the face along Main Street. Um, this really achieves that. So as you come into business district from this side, this is kinda the arrival. And this will be the, the signal that, you know, we're, we're changing the picture a little bit. And this would be a good, um, addition to this area to, to kind of announce that arrival, uh, you know, in a very attractive way. Um, it also talked about the assemblage of properties. So a, as we've talked about this being unique, that, you know, our client has been able to put these seven properties together. You know, it took quite a bit of time, but this is really what the master plan envisioned was. Not necessarily just individual spot redevelopment, uh, projects, but trying to put together larger tracks so that we can get projects similar to this. And it also talks about the improved streetscape. So I, I think as we look at this rendering, we can all agree that, that this would be a much better look than what is there now. Um, the opportunity to eliminate an issue with contamination and address this, as we've talked about, this was a, a borough landfill. I'm dealing with a town that I'm the planner for in Mercer County, Pennington, that has a very similar issue. You know, it was a municipal landfill, uh, from, from the fifties to the eighties. And now we're dealing with the DEP telling us, you know, you have to do something with this. And that can be capping, it can be redevelopment, it can be removal, you know, lots of different things. But this project will really be the impetus to finally address this issue and, and resolve it satisfactorily. Uh, and again, we've committed to work with the borough to achieve that. The, you know, the condition of the property, if you look back at the original investigation, um, you know, some of the buildings have been improved in this area with, with the ice cream store and, and Pops, uh, but others have not. So we have, you know, one building that's been abandoned for a significant amount of time. Uh, the redevelopment investigation found that indeed, you know, there were conditions of blight in this area that would be remedied with this proposal. So that's a, another important benefit. The flood conversation seems like it's to be continued, so I, I think we're gonna look at some additional information and we'll come back on that. Uh, but Mayor, I just wanna touch briefly on, on the issue that you brought up, um, of affordable housing. So it, it's really going to be up to, um, how the borough's gonna approach the fourth round as to how we would deal with that. I think our current thinking is that we're in the workforce housing realm. Um, that's something that's specifically discussed. Workforce housing is, um, housing that would be affordable to people that make between eighty percent and a hundred and twenty percent of median income for, for the region. Somerset County happens to be one of the highest income regions, uh, not just in the state, but in the country. Um, so those, those rent numbers are, are fairly high. So the goal would be, um, if the borough were to choose to enter the fourth round process, file a plan, um, with the state and go that route, then we could talk about having deed restricted affordable housing units. With workforce housing, we, we have a little bit more flexibility. So we could work with you to figure out what ranges of median we would wanna target, uh, how many of those units we would do that. But then we also are not confined by the affordable housing regulations of the state. So, you know, you can't give preference to borough residents for affordable housing units. They have to be available to anyone from, from anywhere. Uh, they also have to be affirmatively marketed. So if we went the workforce housing route, it gives us a little more flexibility to give preference to local residents for those units. Whereas, you know, we wouldn't have that opportunity if they were to be deed restricted affordable housing units. That's a conversation that, you know, that we can continue as we move forward. Uh, but again, I think it's, it's largely gonna be up to which approach the borough chooses to take for round four. But, you, you know, either way, um, that will be part of the conversation. Really, Mr. Chairman, that's all I had in the way of direct remarks. I think, you know, Craig pretty much stole some of my thunder with, uh, some of those. So I'll, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Um, at this point, I will open it up to the public for questions or comments. Mike. I think that microphone is on.
Does it work?
Yes, please.
I won't be that long, believe me.
Um, Mike, I live at Ida for Drive. I should emphasize, I'm on the redevelopment committee and also on the DSA board, but I'm gonna speak just in a personal capacity. Mostly someone who's obviously been, referenced, has been around in this borough for a long time. So Craig Stires gets, uh, an A plus for his history lesson. Um, it's no exaggeration to say that the focus for the entire history of Somerville planning has been on redeveloping this part of Main Street. It is part of Main Street, but historically has not been as successful as the other end of town. And you think about it, it's very easy to understand why because the western end of Main Street, you know when you arrive. Somerset combines with West End, you hit Main Street, there's Borough Hall, there's the monuments, there's Granite's building, you're in downtown. We don't have that gateway feature here. So this is obviously a huge opportunity that we've been talking about literally for, for decades. And one of the challenges of making this happen, of course, is that you need multiple properties to be assembled. Acquiring seventeen different pieces of property is no easy deal. In fact, it may never happen again unless we do take full advantage of this opportunity to make the best possible project happen. My concern is we have to think about the cost of the borough health if it doesn't take place. Because we may not have, never have an opportunity to create something in this part of, uh, of town. What's happened here about the affordable housing? I worked with David Stoops. I sat on the board with the community, caring for its own. We tried to get it happened. It didn't because it just wasn't the support there. Um, little quick history lesson, we haven't mentioned Veterans Memorial Drive. That bypass road was a long-term goal of the borough of Somerville. It was stuck for decades because it was a state project used federal money. Assembly Jack Penn came in and said, make it a local project. And I had the state money to do it. He happened to be the chairman of the Assembly Transportation Committee. So the state, so the borough stepped in. It was borough leadership that got that road done. And the idea was with that new road, that that would revitalize the entire neighborhood. There was one building that went up. There was one building that went up, but other than that, nothing happened for decades until the Sappio showed up. He acquired properties. But that would not have happened unless the borough once again stepped up and entered into a public-private partnership to create that seven-story parking deck. So the theme is the borough stepping in to really provide the leadership to make sure this, these significant improvements take place. So I think that's kinda where we're at right now. It's an opportunity for the borough to work closely with the developer, see what we can do with a win-win situation that works out well for everybody. The idea of a gateway is really important as well because I think it would be a cue that people entering into downtown Somerville to slow down. Because right now they go up that hill fifty-five miles an hour and there's been fatalities and, and, and we need to keep public safety in mind as well. And last but not least, um, the Downtown Somerville Alliance did a streetscape plan. We looked at the East End, we endorsed the idea of a gateway project. But what we really highlighted was the connection with Peters Brook. And we call not only a connection, but a celebration. Let's celebrate the fact that this is the nexus between downtown Somerville and a spectacular amenity called Peters Brook Gateway that goes throughout the county. And that's something we can make, really use to enhance this particular property. I'd like to, like to highlight that as well. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Okay. I wanna make a comment. I think, you know, uh, there, there are a few people in this room who have been around here for as long as I have, but not too many. And as long as I have been around, we've tried to make the Veterans Memorial Drive and, and the East End area better. And when I was a kid, that it used to be Franklin Street and, and I wouldn't go down there. I wouldn't, I wouldn't go there. It was a dangerous place. We've made a lot of progress and I think this is an opportunity to finish it off. This is an opportunity to make it what we wanted it to be fifty years ago. And I can speak to it because I've been around for longer than that. And I think we need to take this opportunity and they'll, they will listen to our input and I, maybe they raise a building up a few feet. I don't know, but I think, I think we we can't lose this opportunity. And that's it. That's my comments. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Um, I have no additional comments. I've already opened a meeting up to the public, so unless somebody else has comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.